Please welcome our mayor, Buddy Dyer.
Good afternoon and welcome to the December 16, 2013, meeting of the Orlando City Council. I'm going to call on Commissioner Sheehan today for the introduction of Reverend Anderson for our invocation.
Thank you very much, Mayor Dyer. And many of you who've known me a long time know that I've struggled to reconcile my spirituality with my sexuality and being openly gay. I've been attending Christchurch Unity for about six months now. It has truly helped me to find the right balance of mind, body, and soul. I am honored today to introduce someone who I consider a spiritual mentor, who has been vital to that transformation. We will begin today's proceedings with an invocation offered by Reverend Cynthia Alice Anderson, Senior Minister and Spiritual Leader at Christchurch Unity. The church is located at 771 Holden Avenue. The church has existed for 83 years and Reverend Anderson has served the congregation for over five years. Reverend Anderson's vision for the church is to build a loving, healthy community that supports souls by attracting a diverse congregation and celebrating those differences. It reaches out to the underserved and those judged harshly by society and supports soul growth, celebration, and belonging. The invocation will be followed by the Pledge of Allusions led today by District Three Commissioner Robert Stewart. Would everyone please stand?
Please join me as we pray. God, we do give thanks for this time in this place. We ask for divine order to prevail right here, right now, in this place. And know that each one of us, each soul, is being guided. So we pray for your highest and best in all things today. We pray this in and after the nature of the living, loving presence of the Christ, and so it is. Amen. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let's call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll and make the determination of a quorum, please?
Commissioner Gray?
Here.
Commissioner Ortiz?
Here.
Commissioner Stewart?
Here.
Commissioner Sheehan?
Here.
Commissioner Linham?
Here.
Commissioner Ings?
Here.
Mayor Dyer?
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's see, do we have some minutes? We sure do. Let's take up for consideration the minutes of the agenda review and city council meetings of December 9, 2013. Motion by Commissioner Linham, second by Commissioner Sheehan. On favor of the motion, so by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, motion carries. Ray Elwell, Deputy CFO for a 20-year service recognition.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. It's my honor to present Bill Jacobus for recognition on his retirement after 20 years of service to the city of Orlando. In 1966, Uncle Sam told Bill that his duty station would be in U.S. Air Force Air Rescue Headquarters in Orlando. While stationed here, he met his future wife Carol, and they were married in June of 1968. Shortly after their marriage, Bill was sent for a short time to Scott Air Force Base in Illinois, and then he was sent to Vietnam in February of 1969. Bill spent a year at the Nong Air Base and then returned to Orlando, where he's been ever since. After 20 years in the private sector, Bill was hired by the city in December of 1993. He spent most of his 20 years working in the Knights, most recently on the city's 911 system. Bill and his wife have two sons, a granddaughter, and he's proud to say a brand-new grandson as well. In addition to his full-time job with the city, Bill is very active with his volunteer activities with the Children's Miracle Network and other charities, working side-by-side with the Stars. And he's proud to say that Marie Osmond is one of his favorites. (laughter) Bill's wife retired from Orange County, and she's been waiting on him to retire. He plans to continue his volunteer work with the Children's Miracle Network, the American Red Cross, and the American Cancer Society, as well as catch up on his honey-do list and certainly help out with his brand-new grandson. On behalf of the fellow city employees, we want to thank Bill for the services he has provided to the city of Orlando, and we certainly wish him much happiness and success in his retirement.[283.45][283.45](applause)
There is a party upstairs, I believe, isn't it? At 2:00? What a bad time. I saw the cake.
No, thanks, I'll meet him. No, thanks, I'll meet him.
Okay, if everybody would silence their phones or other devices. It's the holiday season, and it's the last council meeting of the year. And as we near Christmas and you finish up your Christmas shopping, I would encourage everybody to think local. Think about visiting one of our Main Street districts for a little shopping this time of year. The other thing that's always on our mind is college football. It is coming to Orlando, so we're getting in the football spirit for all of you who haven't been eliminated from your fantasy football leagues. We have two very important games that are going to be played here in Orlando. The Russell Athletic Bowl will be on December 28 at 6:45, and it'll be on ESPN between the Miami Hurricanes and the Louisville Cardinals. I invite you to go to that game. The Citrus Bowl Parade, or the Florida Citrus Parade, is Monday, December 30 at 10:00, and it's going to be remarkable with over 3,000 participants. Always a great parade. And then finally, we'll ring in the new year on January 1 with the 68th edition of the 2014 Capital One Bowl with the South Carolina Gamecocks coached by the Old Ball Coach and the Wisconsin Badgers, and that'll be played at 1:00 on January 1. And also on January 1, out in Glendale, Arizona, our own UCF Knights will be taking on the Baylor Bears. The Knights have had an incredible season. They finished 11-1, won their conference championship game, and also, for the first time this year, beat the University of South Florida. And I had a little wager with the mayor of Tampa, who happens to be a Penn State alumni, so UCF beat both Penn State and UCF this year, so had nice I-4 bragging rights. And Ed, if you would just play that little video, I'd like to embarrass Mayor Buckhorn right at this moment.[520.00][520.00](laughter)
(inaudible)
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 Tampa Mayor Bob Buckhorn?
By saying this is one of the most humiliating things I've ever had to do. Not only did UCF beat my alma mater, Penn State, I was there, I talked smack. Buddy, I got to give it to you. You then turned around and beat my city's team, USF, although we were close. We almost got you because you guys were just too cocky, just too busy looking for the BCS championship. Oh, yeah, sorry.
Which we're going to.
Sorry, you're not going to be there.
It's a bowl game.
It is a bowl game. What are you guys in, like the?
Fiesta Bowl.
Fiesta Bowl.
Yep. Hey, how's USF's BCS Bowl go?
So, I am a mayor of my word. I said I would do this. Buddy, here I am, embarrassing myself, and I hope you have great fun at my expense. I am certain you will. The bet was that I would put this jersey on, and then we would raise the flag of UCF above City Hall. Lord, forgive me. All right, let's finish the humiliation.
(laughter)
Oh, yes.
(applause)
Good job.
You can have a smaller flag.
Well, we were going to do it at midnight last night, but...
(laughter)
All right, Mayor Buckhorn is a very good sport and is a great mayor of Tampa, but go Knights. A couple of things. The DDB is sponsoring holiday movies every Thursday night, so you can see Elf at the Walt Disney Amphitheater this coming Thursday. And the city of Orlando, you all know that we do National Night Out. Well, we won first place in our category this year. How about that?[667.32][667.32](applause) Okay, and I have a couple of items on the agenda that I'd like to mention. On the agenda, we're going to vote to approve 19 Mayor's Matching Grant Projects, and they are projects, everything from mentoring to creative arts, academic enhancements, cultural enrichment, career exploration. We're able to give a little bit of help, and the partnership organization either matches that with cash or in kind, or in a lot of cases, volunteer hours. So I know a lot of you in the audience here are recipients of grants, so if you would stand or wave and be recognized, I want to thank you.[710.12][710.12](applause) We also got an additional funding agreement with the Corporation for National and Community Service for up to 11 AmeriCorps Vista volunteers. There is an item for a pedestrian bridge to help us with the trail at Shingle Creek. And then also on today's consent agenda is the approval of a lease between GOA and Jet Blue for six and a half acres near their existing Jet Blue university facility. And they plan to construct a new $25 million training facility and two new four-story hotel towers with a total of 196 guest suites. And when Jet Blue first came here, they were anticipating creating 150 jobs in the city of Orlando, and with this addition, it'll be now 400 jobs that Jet Blue has brought to the city of Orlando. That is all I have for today, so we're going to move on to the consent agenda. And the consent agenda is a number of items that are acted upon through a single vote of council. We give each of the council members an opportunity to comment on the consent agenda or update you of items of great interest from their districts. And we rotate the order that we go, and we'll start with Commissioner Stewart.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for mentioning the Jet Blue. I think that oftentimes when you serve on the council, you don't get a chance to kind of see the beginning and much of the end. And I think it's an inspiration to the rest of the community that you can come here, bring quality jobs, and continue to expand. So I appreciate your leadership on that. A couple of quick things I want to mention. One is we had an opportunity to be with Commissioner Sheehan about Rees Across America. She'll share a little bit more about that, but it was an honor to be out at Greenwood and spend some time with Commissioner Sheehan, and such an important recognition of those people who gave lives to serve our country. Saturday night is the New Winter Spark in Baldwin Park. It's their new holiday festival of lights. They just named it. Irina and John Dolinsky had a chance to be there for that and had a chance to greet them and to greet everybody on behalf of the mayor and behalf of the city to enjoy the wonderful holiday in Baldwin Park. Last week, we dedicated the new College Park bike rack, if you hadn't had a chance to see that in Albert Park. Took two years' worth of work to get it there, but it was a lot of that had to do with just the process and moving it forward, and it was a Mayor's Matching Grant as well. So, Mayor, thank you for that. We dedicated that, and thank you to Andre Kudlak and to Kim Foy, who was the inspiration behind all of it and also the designer of it. On the agenda today, the one item I just want to mention briefly, the annexation come in on Item C2, and I've got a couple of additional issues I'd like to kind of talk about. I'm okay with it, but Rick, if you get a chance, Rick Howard, if you get a chance afterwards, let's talk a little bit. This is a property that happens to be like 100 yards from my house, and so I have a little bit of knowledge on it, so I'd like to talk to you a little bit about that. But I think it's good that these areas are coming in, and I appreciate the work of our planning department to do that. Holiday safety tips, the mayor mentioned several things about what's coming up. I will also tell you that the people who want to commit crimes also know it's the holiday season, and we are beginning to see a spike in the community about vehicles that are left unlocked and people breaking into vehicles that are left unlocked. So I'll be putting out some more holiday tips this week to the entire community and to encourage them to make sure that they really be safe during this holiday season. Nothing's worse than having somebody come and ruin your holiday season because of our carelessness to give them the opportunity to break in. And with that, we have a lot of stuff going on that's mentioned on our website. I appreciate the work that our staff does. It's a chance for me to pause for a moment and say thank you to Officer Patrick and to Jessica Stead for the work that they do on behalf of the citizens of District Three and the citizens of Orlando. And with that, let me wish you all a Merry Christmas and a Happy Holidays and a Happy New Year.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll move on to Commissioner Sheehan.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer. I want to wish everyone a great holiday, too. And I was honored to participate in Rees Across America at Greenwood Cemetery. And we put almost 400 rees out at the cemetery on the military graves, and we're going to make sure that we have enough to do every single one next year. I think that's really, really important, but it was a very, very meaningful ceremony, and I was very, very honored to participate in honoring our veterans this last weekend. There's also numerous holiday events in the neighborhoods and the Main Street. It's just been a great time. Everybody's done a great job in celebrating their own neighborhoods and Main Street in very unique ways. So again, if you have a chance to hit our Main Streets, especially Thornton Park, Mills 50, and downtown south, we certainly appreciate you doing some shopping and some of our local businesses. On the agenda today, the Mayor's Neighborhood Matching Grant. Today, we're awarding two things that are near and dear to my heart, the Kids' Fringe Festival and Mills 50 Dumpster Art. So you might be seeing a bad kitty painted on a dumpster, and I will not be compensated for that. But we've got a great bunch of artists ready to go to paint those dumpsters out and making something beautiful out of something ugly. I know Commissioner Linham, you've worked on making a lot of that happen in your district, and we want to follow suit over District Four as well. And on Item I-10 today, too, we're finally getting the bridge across the Shingle Creek Trail. It's taken a long time to get the agreement with the county. That particular parcel has sat vacant for a long time because of, you know, the issues with the economy. But someone who worked really, really hard on that project, who actually passed away many, many years ago, was a planner named Kyle Coob. It's about 10 years ago now, and it's been sitting there. And I think it would be a really nice thing to put a plaque commemorating her on that bridge because she worked so hard. That was one of the hardest projects and controversial projects. It was a golf course that converted use, and people never want to see their golf course go away, and Kyle did a wonderful job working with those neighbors. She was a phenomenal human being. Oddly enough, died of heart cancer because she had one of the biggest hearts of anybody I've ever known, so I would love to be able to honor her in some way. It was actually in the original PD, but we've since rescinded that, so I think it'd be appropriate to honor Kyle in some way and have her family come and participate in that. And that's all, head mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll move to Commissioner Linham.
Thank you. And before I forget it in my remarks, I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, a Happy New Year, a Safe New Year, a Prosperous New Year. The past two weeks, we've had so many parties. I've tried to get them, like Commissioner Gray, on my website, and so many events, but there are just a few I have to highlight because I think Kevin is here, or he was supposed to be here, or Officer Williams, maybe. The OPD Christmas Party, that's an annual event ever since I've been here, and I've tried to partner with them every year. Chief was there. It's one time of the year, kids see so many police officers giving them toys, helping with the toys, feeding them, cleaning up after them, and it was a great night again. So I want to say a real special thanks to Kevin and all the other officers and your chief. Thank you very much. We gave away lots and lots of bicycles and everything. It's the same every year. It just gets better and better for all the kids, and we had lots of fun with the youngsters at Jackson. Just want to say thanks for that. And to come, well, on Saturday, I was with Senator Siplin Juan, and I were, as we've done every year for 11 years, their great toy giveaway out at Evans. So lots and lots of bicycles there, about 2,000 families. I don't know how many, I repeat families, but the important thing is that they were there and they were participating. And the schedule for the 21st at Jackson is Reverend Derek McGrey's Christmas Party. And on the 22nd, I think at Northwest, I think it's Bishop Cabarras and Glenn Davis with the Magic. He's really trying to do more and more things in the city, so, well, more and more positive things in the city, so we're hoping that that's pretty good. I think I see Mrs. Beverly Page. Is that Beverly back there?
Yes.
Let me tell you, I mentioned last week at city council that I had the great honor of presenting a key to the city to the National President of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. And at that event, Mrs. Page, why don't you stand up? I know who you are, but others may not. We had this great excerpt from Claire and the Chocolate Nutcracker. This city has supported the Chocolate Nutcracker ever since it started. And I went on Saturday night, went with the excerpt. I thought it was great then, but Saturday night was superb, and I see a lot of the Mayor's Matching Grant projects dealing with art. So, Mrs. Page, you and Ernest, my love, my sweetheart, that I serve with on the dais here, I want to say a real special things. I know you the best talent I have seen in Orlando. And mayor and council, Mrs. Page has got to bring Claire and the Chocolate Nutcracker to the Dr. Phillips Performing Arts Center that first year we opened. There's, we had about, what, 20, over 2,000 people Saturday night. And you just got to see the great performances of ballet and tap and every dance there is. Great, wonderful performers from Lakeland to Orlando, from all over the theater. So I just want to applaud you. We do not honor you enough, but I have got to say that because it is far better than it used to. It was good before, but it is absolutely superb now. And I want to say thank you for your work in the community, to you and your husband. Thank you very much. And congratulations to the other grants, grantees, against a lot of them dealing with the arts and with things we're trying to do to help our kids. And that's what the season is all about. I was a little disappointed that Shallow did not reapply for the Raising the Bar grant because they had all of the kids take an FCAT pass, and I think you can't get any better than that. But I see there's a STEM piece here, and I think that is superb. But on the dumpster art, I don't know how Walter Hawkins didn't help me kind of figure out to get one of these grants. Instead of paying for it out of my budget, we've got about 30 of these things to do around the stadium as we rebuild and reconstruct the stadium. We're doing our dumpster art that we started a few years ago, but we're also trying to, Commissioner Sheehan, do the signal box, too, that we talked about that before. So I think, I've noticed in District Five, where the art is on the dumpsters, they don't mess up them. So we're trying to do little things that help the community. So thank you, thank you very much for being here. Take care of your grants, have fun with them. Those in District Five, now, there used to be a tradition. We don't do it too much anymore. I like to be there when you initiate them. I like to be there when you close them. So I'm saying it from the dais, so people say, "Well, I didn't know." Well, if it's in District Five, it comes through my vote, too, so I really, really appreciate y'all being here, and I want you to be safe for the holidays. God bless you all and to our council and to our mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll move on to District Six, Commissioner Ings.
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me. I'd like to say congratulations right off the agenda to A3, the Mayor's Matching Grants, all of the recipients of the Mayor's Matching Grants. Congratulations to you. And obviously, you're doing some great things for our children and also for our seniors, so we do appreciate what you're doing and how you're helping to build stronger communities. And I'd like to say under Item J4, the collective bargaining agreement with the Firefighters, congratulations on your agreement. This is a great thing, and we're moving forward. This past Monday night, December 9, at the Dr. James R. Smith Center on Bruton Boulevard, we held the Affordable Healthcare Reform Meeting, and that was with myself and Commissioner Daisy Linham. We had a great event, over 68 attendees at this meeting. They were very interested, enthused, asked great questions. We had Stephanie Owens, the senior advisor from the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, the regional director, she was there on hand, and also Ms. Darnell "DD" Barber Moyet, and she was the Licensed Healthcare Marketplace Navigator. She works with Primary Care Access Network, PCAN. So this was a great event, and Commissioner Linham and I are looking to do more towards sign-up opportunities and that kind of thing at our respective centers' computer labs. And so we're looking to have navigators to come in and work with the people on that end, too. And then, of course, this past Friday, December 13, the Senior Christmas Celebration Banquet that was sponsored by the Rathman Club, Mr. George Jordan, was held at the L. Claudia Allen Center. The seniors were there on hand, and they certainly enjoyed themselves, and this was a great event for them. And then, of course, as Commissioner Linham had mentioned, this past Saturday, December 14, Claire and the Chocolate Nutcracker, great event. And Orlando Community Arts, thank you so very much, Beverly Page, and what you do and also partnering and collaborating is Terry Burns with the Stand and Ovation. Thank you so much, too, for being involved, because those kids, I mean, they just look great. I mean, the little ones to the big ones, they all look good, and to see our kids doing positive things means a lot for our community. And then we had the District Six Third Annual Washington Shores Community Christmas Parade, and this was started off at the Dr. James R. Smith Center, and local residents and visitors from all over central Florida joined together to celebrate the holiday season and to commemorate the history of Washington Shores. Southwest Orlando, more than 50 organizations participated in this parade, including the Untouchables Car and Truck of Orlando, Claire and the Chocolate Nutcracker, the Orlando Buffalo Soldiers, Orlando Urban Biker Coalition, Carver Middle School Step Team, Washington Shores Elementary School, and Oak Ridge High School Step Team. Various city departments, thank you so much for your help and participation, specifically with Greenup Orlando and Waste Management. I'd like to thank the Orlando Fire Department, the Orlando Police Department, and especially Bill Frederick Park at Turkey Lake, who also showcased a petting zoo at the parade. This year's grand marshal was Mr. John Jordan. Mr. John Jordan was the third black police officer that was hired in August of 1952 to the Orlando Police Department. As we know, the first two black police officers were Jones and Perry. His tenure is from August 1952 to November 1958. Mr. Jordan served as a patrolman for the city of Orlando, and Mr. Jordan is 93 years old, and so he's still around, looking great, and speaking very well, too. I'd like to thank the elected official... I'd like to thank the elected officials, Orange County Mayor Teresa Jacobs, who was there on hand, Congresswoman Corrine Brown's staff, Renita Sanders and Chester Glover, County Commissioner Scott Boyd and his Cadillac convertible, and Orange County Property Appraiser Rick Singh, Councilman Alvin Moore from Eatonville, Orange County Tax Collector Scott Randolph, and of course, our very own Orlando Police Chief Paul Rooney, and Orlando Fire Department, John Miller. Thank you guys so much. They even passed out candy to the kids. The parade concluded with festivities at Hankins Park. And we had the honor of having a very special guest, Sheila Ray Charles. Sheila Ray Charles is a talented songwriter and singer, and she is the daughter of the legendary Ray Charles. And she was our featured performer. I want to thank Cora Miles Jefferson, who was our Mistress of Ceremony with CMJ Resources and the 411 Radio Show with WOKB, 1680 AM, the West Flow Band, Howard Flute Gentry, Ed Brown, a singer, the Jones High School Marching Tigers, they were on hand, and of course, the Young Blacks in Action, a great youth group. The Zumba Fitness Gear provided additional entertainment. They also provided toys for our kids. And there were over 10 organizations that distributed Christmas toys at the festivities in the park. And I would like to thank my team, my aides Cynthia Wilson and Sylvia Wills, and Orlando Police Liaison Officer Joseph Lundey, and of course, Marlon Potte, the Smith Center, Akiva Wilson, the Smith Center, Mike Pavelko from the Hankins Park, Herb Williams from the L. Claudia Allen Center, and Mr. George Jordan with the Rathman Club, and also the Rathman Club Larry Williams with Simeon Resource and Development Center, and of course, our very own Howard Flute Gentry with the Young Blacks in Action. And I'd like to thank the police officers who cooked and served hamburgers and hot dogs, Detective Jerome Keenan, Officer Leroy Alfred, and SEO Taisha Spidel, and Sergeant Steve Stanilin. And we also have a Christmas tree in the Washington Shore Shopping Center Park, thanks to Sylvia Wills and her husband Woody, and also Joe Lundey. And at night, it does light up. So we're so thankful for that. Merry Christmas to everybody, Happy New Year. Mickey, good to see you, sir. And thank you, Mayor. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll move to District One. Commissioner Gray.
Thank you, Mayor. 'Tis the season, so I want to share an experience. We had Saturday morning, this past Saturday, which was a lot of fun. In a minute, I'm going to have Ed roll some pictures. But we have some neighbors in District One, Frank and Selena Nobolo, that decided to form a foundation with the sole purpose of taking plus or minus 300 underprivileged children shopping every Christmas. And the neat thing about it is they take the kids, and they have chaperones to guide them through the store, but they do not allow their parents to go with them. So the kids get a $100 gift card, and they can pick out anything they want to. That's the good news. The bad news is, we had to do it before the store opened. We went to the Target store down in Hunters Creek. So we loaded the kids on the bus. About 25 of our children from Citrus Square participated. And we loaded them on the bus about 5:00 a.m. Saturday morning. And so I want to thank some of the, yeah, that's the bad news. But look, as you'll see in the pictures, everybody had a great time. The kids behaved appropriately. It was a positive experience, and a good time was had, while they really did themselves proud. I just want to read these names, because again, if you get up at 4:35 in the morning, at least read my name, right? So here we go. And I'll do it quick. Certainly, our hosts were Selena and Frank Nobolo, Jeannie Wilson, Officer Edgar Malave, Ed Richter, of course, Cindy Leitner, daughter Rachel, Rodney Williams, the Dover Shores and Citrus Square staff of Dustin Wheeler, Dee Dee DeRozario, DJ Hernandez, Missy Majek, Christina Ferraro, and Mateo Allen. So all of those folks were kind enough to jump out of bed in the morning, but the kids had a really great experience. And there was somebody with Santa Claus. I don't know who he was. But as you can see, we had a great time. But that's all ahead, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. And District Two, Commissioner Ortiz.
We're closing this year, aren't we? Thank you, Mayor. Before I go any further, I'd like to recognize we have some of our kids from our Arzelia Park Little League baseball teams, and Mrs. Susan Wilcox. If you guys can stand up, please, to be recognized. Thank you for coming to the last City Council of the Year. I want to take advantage also and thank from the very bottom of my heart each and every constituent in my district for supporting us in what we do, the decisions we make here, for keeping us on their prayers, for the collaboration going on between government, law enforcement, firefighters, and everybody in our community. I want to thank our staff, everybody in our staff, because you guys, you're the backbones, the backbone of this government along with the community. You know, you guys work hard and are solemnly recognized for what you do. So thank you so much. I want to thank our police department and our firefighters, because without you, we would not have this city that we have. You guys keep the peace and tranquility that we so much need in order to prosper. And of course, our commissioners, our mayor, thank you. We're very proud of you. And I'm very proud of each and every one of the commissioners I work with. Thank you so much for the years we have been here, working together in everything we do. And last thought for the year, we live in a very divided world, either because of politics, cultural aspects, or mere vanity and pride. I hope during this Christmas season, we have some time to meditate and think that what really matters are the needs of our community. Let's help the hungry, homeless. Let's pray for our soldiers that are still serving overseas. Let's keep helping our children, seniors, and disabled people. Let's show the world that as Americans, we really know what, how, the Christmas spirit, or what the Christmas spirit is all about. With that being said, Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Is there a motion on the consent agenda?
No.
Motion by Commissioner Sheen.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rings. All in favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, so the motion carries. Let's recess the City Council meeting, convene the Neighborhood Improvement District Board of Directors meeting. And is there a motion to accept the meeting minutes from the November 20th Advisory Council meeting?
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Sheen, second by Commissioner Rings. All in favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries.
And Mayor, I just had one clarification on that, that in accepting the minutes, we still do have an opportunity to deal with the amount of time that the NID is going to be for, because there were some concerns at 15 years. They wanted to have some latitude, but that is not what we're deciding today. So I just wanted to make that clear to the NID folks, that they do have some time to work that out.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great. Then we will adjourn the NID meeting and reconvene the City Council meeting. And I'll let everybody know that was here for a Neighborhood Mayor's Matching Grant, that just passed on the consent agenda. So if you want to stay for the rest of the meeting, you certainly can. But I'm going to give everybody just a couple of minutes right here to escape City Council chamber. But I will wish you a Merry Christmas as you take your leave.
Thank you. And Mayor, Kevin is back. I didn't see him earlier. Guess who's going to join you guys with the bow ties? About Kevin a bow tie for Christmas.
Nice.
Yeah, it's just basic black, but the next one will be pink. Let him get in touch with his feminine side. When he learns how to tie it.
Did you get him a manual?
Yeah, you do.
No. Commissioner Ortiz said he'll tell him what it's going to do.
Okay, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine items of business that I think we can take care of pretty quickly. So let's go. Hearings, ordinances, first read, Madam Clerk, number one.
An ordinance of the City of Orlando, Florida amending the growth management plan to change the future land use map designation for certain property generally located north of Le Vista Boulevard, east of Corporate Center Boulevard, south of Seminole Avenue, and west of South Goldenrod Road, comprised of about 19.57 acres, from industrial in part and conservation in part, to office low intensity in part and conservation in part. To change the future land use map designation for certain property generally located north of Millenia Boulevard, south and east of Interstate Four, and west of John Young Parkway, comprised of about 86.46 acres, from urban activity center in part and conservation in part, to community activity center in part and conservation in part. Amending future land use subarea policy S-24.7 and amending future land use policy 4.1.9, providing for severability, corrections, scrivenors, errors, and an effective date.
Patty, move it. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Sheen, second by Commissioner Stewart. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among Commissioners, hearing none. All in favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Number two, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City of Orlando, Florida amending the growth management plan to designate certain property generally located north of the Beachline Expressway, State Road 528, east of Narcusi Road, and south of Le Vista Boulevard, comprised of about 14.7 acres, as airport support district, medium intensity in part and conservation in part, on the city's official future land use map. Designating certain property generally located at the northeast corner of State Road 417 and Moss Park Road, comprised of about 16.13 acres, as residential medium intensity on the city's official future land use map. Establishing new subarea policy S-40.3, providing for severability, corrections, scrivenors, errors, and an effective date.
Move to approve. Second. Motion by Commissioner Gray, second by Commissioner Ortiz. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among Commissioners, hearing none. All in favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Okay, hearings, ordinances, second reading, Madam Clerk, number one.
Mayor, this is the Weahootie property. And an ordinance of the City Council, the City of Orlando, Florida, amending the city's adopt the growth management plan to designate certain real property generally located north of Moss Park Road, south of State Road 528, and abutting the east side of State Road 417, comprised of 1,266 acres, more or less, as office low intensity in part, neighborhood activity center in part, community activity center in part, and conservation in part, on the city's official future land use maps. Establishing a new subarea policy for the same property, provide a maximum development program and required land development regulations, providing for severability, corrections, scrivenors, errors, and an effective date.
Move to adopt. Second. Motion by Commissioner Gray, second by Commissioner Ortiz. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among Commissioners, hearing none. All in favor of the Weahootie ordinance, say aye.
Weahootie.
Aye.
Those opposed, so the motion carries. Number two, Madam Clerk.
And this is also Weahootie. An ordinance of the City Council, the City of Orlando, Florida, designating certain real property generally located north of Moss Park Road, south of State Road 528, and abutting the east side of State Road 417, comprised of 1,266 acres, more or less, as planned development district on the city's official zoning maps. Providing special land development regulations of the planned development district, providing for severability, correction of scrivenors, errors, and an effective date.
Move to adopt. Second. Motion by Commissioner Gray, second by Commissioner Ortiz. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify? Discussion among Commissioners, all in favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Number three, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City Council, the City of Orlando, Florida, rezoning part of certain land generally located north of East Esther Street, south of East Kaylee Street, east of South Orange Avenue, and west of Delaney Avenue, comprised of about .89 acres, from R-2A TSP to R-3A TSP. Amending the city's official zoning maps, providing for severability, corrections, scrivenors, errors, and an effective date.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Sheen, second by Commissioner Stewart. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among Commissioners, hearing none. All in favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Number four, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City Council, the City of Orlando, Florida, designating certain land generally located north of Carter Street, south of Barley Street, east of Ellis Avenue, and west of Willie Mays Parkway, comprised of about 38.1 acres, as planned development district on the city's official zoning maps. Providing special land development regulations of the planned development district, providing for severability, corrections, scrivenors, errors, and an effective date.
Is that me?
Yep.
Move to adopt. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Linum, second by Commissioner Sheen. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among Commissioners, hearing none. All in favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. And number five, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City of Orlando granting advanced disposal services, Solid Waste Southeast Inc., a non-exclusive franchise to provide roll-off container collection and disposal of solid waste within the City of Orlando, outlining franchisees' duties and providing the terms and conditions under which such franchise shall operate, providing for severability and an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Ring, second by Commissioner Stewart. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion by Commissioners, hearing none. All in favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
And so the motion carries. Ordnances, first read, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City Council, the City of Orlando, Florida, rezoning part of certain land generally located north of West Princeton Street, south of Silver Star Road, east of Mercy Drive, and west of North John Young Parkway, comprised of about 12.8 acres, from IGW to IPW, amending the city's official zoning maps, providing for severability, corrections, scrivenors, errors, and an effective date.
Is that me?
Move.
Second.
That's good enough.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Linum. Who had the second?
Commissioner Stewart.
Commissioner Stewart has a second. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among Commissioners, hearing none. All in favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Number two, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City Council, the City of Orlando, Florida, annexing to the corporate limits of the City of Orlando, Florida, certain real property generally located at the northeast corner of the intersection of State Road 417 and Moss Park Road, comprised of 16.13 acres, more or less, providing for severability, corrections, scrivenors, errors, and an effective date.
Move to approve. Second. Motion by Commissioner Gray, second by Commissioner Ortiz. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among Commissioners, hearing none. All in favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, so the motion carries. Okay. So that concludes the official business of the Orlando City Council. This is the last meeting of the year. I wish everybody a happy and safe holiday season.